Commissioner, Commissioner Gauthier.
Here.
Commissioner Blair.
Here.
Commissioner Gallow.
Here.
Commissioner Petrie.
On the line. Petrie is not well, and so she's joining us by Zoom today.
We'll hold up on Commissioner Petrie.
Hi, I'm Amber Gau.
There she is.
Commissioner Mitchell.
He's in excused access.
And Chair Maynor.
Yes. Good evening. Agenda items for the public hearings will be itemized on the agenda. I will identify the subject, announce when the public hearing is open, and request anyone interested to state their feelings regarding the matter being considered. You may name and address any approval criteria you think applies to this decision. Failure to raise an issue in person, Zoom, or by letter to the Planning Commission precludes raising that issue at a subsequent time on appeal. If the Planning Commission decision is appealed, the council may or may not allow new evidence. For your information, this is an unusual situation. Generally, annexation matters only go to city councils, and land use applications generally just come to us. Because this is both an annexation and an application for a development, we are handling them, but we are not making a final decision. We are only going to make a recommendation to the city council. The city council will be making the final decision on whether the city annexes this piece of property or approves the development. There are also other public entities that would have or will have input into the decision, and there may be conditions on any recommendation and/or final decision at city council regarding the applications. I just wanted to make that clear. This is an unusual situation for us. Okay, well, I will talk briefly. If you wish to speak for or against or comment in any way, you can. It's a signature folks thing out there. You should sign up on the paper outside to be able to testify in person. Ronnie will be coordinating people who are testifying online. You should get your number when you're out there. Okay. Make sure you've written your name and all the other required fields on the request. For testimonials via Zoom, please write your name, address, and rather whether you're in support, opposition, or neutral in the comments section. Names will be assigned a number in the order that we receive comments in the chat box. When I call your number, or Ronnie will call your number, please give your hearing comment registration form to the city recorder. Identify, state your address, and make your statement. The maximum time allotted for testimony will be three minutes per person. Okay. If there is a representative from a neighborhood association, they will have 10 minutes. The applicant will have 15 minutes to be for a presentation. If your testimony would be repetitious, but you would like the opportunity to appeal the decision, you must sign the hearing sign-in sheet located at the rear of the council chambers, or type your name in the chat box, or let staff know, and they will type your name in the chat box. Only those who have appeared before the Planning Commission in person, Zoom, or in writing will be allowed to speak on any appeal of this item. Now, we will have two separate hearings. The first hearing will be on the annexation of this property into the city of King City. The second hearing will address the application for the development. Okay. Now, does any person in the member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission to hear this matter? Am I not? Had a call. Okay.
Yeah, you can't.
All right. Ronnie wants me to officially open the public hearing. I'm going to do it after I did what I just did. On land use 2024-03, the annexation, approximately 607. Again, does anyone have wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission? Okay. Don Mobley?
Oh, I'm just raising my hand to get my name on the list to speak later. I'm not challenging.
Okay. All right. Does any member of the Plan-- not having heard anyone in the audience or on Zoom, I will take it there's no entity or person challenging the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Does any Planning Commission member have a potential or actual conflict in this matter? Not?
Dean Blair, I have a potential conflict in that I live on the south end of River Lane. It's about a half a mile due south of the development. 131st turns into River Lane at the dead-end street.
137.
137, sorry. So my only ingress and egress is by the road that passes by the development. I have no direct financial connection at all. There's always the potential that the development could increase or decrease my house. I don't know. But I am declaring that as a potential conflict of interest.
I live in Old King City, so I don't go into that area very often. So I don't think I have a conflict of interest. Does anyone in the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the Planning Commission?
I also have a couple expertise.
Okay.
The developer held several neighborhood meetings, and I'd like to say thank you that that was nice outreach. Held three of them, I attended two of them. There's my expertise contacts.
Dan, does any member of the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the Planning Commission?
I don't wish to challenge, but I would like to make the record more clear. You said you had a potential conflict. The legal standard is, do you think you can put aside any personal feelings about the application and judge the application based on the criteria? If the answer is yes, then you don't have a conflict. If you think, though, that whatever your personal situation would make it impossible for you to objectively analyze the criteria, then that would be the conflict. And then, in that case, it would be appropriate to accuse yourself. So, I mean, that's what--
On the record, I believe I can judge this.
Okay.
And sir, this decision was made upon the recommendation of the Ethics State Ethics Board. So we are following their directions.
I was just about to mention--
Thank you for the question.
--there's a record reflected, though. There are certain things that the record needs to reflect. I was just trying to solicit that testimony, one way or the other.
Okay, then, I will reiterate again. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that if you fail to raise an issue in person, Zoom, or by letter today, or to the Planning Commission, you will be unable to raise that issue at a subsequent hearing to the city council or at a subsequent time on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed to the criteria that staff will describe and other criteria in the plan or land use code which you believe apply to the decision. Failure to specifically address the approval criteria that staff will describe also precludes raising the issue, raising of an issue related to those criteria upon appeal. And as I said, this is an unusual case because this one will automatically go to the city council for a final decision. Okay. At this time, I will call on staff to make your report.
Commissioner.
So for the annexation of 2024-03, the approval criteria, basically, well, let's go back. Actually, just explain what it is that is being proposed to be annexed. So the application was submitted by the applicant. 100% consent from property owners and voters for properties. It included consent form, signed petition, pretty much everything exactly that they needed to submit, certified deed, certified map were submitted to the city.
Ronnie, could you put the map of the area that's to be annexed up? Thank you.
Again, four properties, three of the properties are going up against Beef Ben Road, and one property above Southwest 137th. As far as all the submittals, that's kind of the main responsibility of the applicant in an annexation application is that they're not to submit everything that they need to submit to the city, and that is what the city expects for, based off the requirements in 16192, Annexation of the DDP. The other requirements on the staff report are the Metro Chapter 309, and the ORF 222, Washington County Urban Planning Agreement. Those are more procedural administrative requirements for the city. But again, do you think that needs to be submitted to the city by the applicant? It's what's submitted. Only reasonable in the application, looking at the exact wording of the city code, is Chapter 16192-060, which deals with the local wetland inventory requirements. The code specifically states J-- or, yeah, 16192-060 subsection I, annexation. The city shall not adopt an ordinance for annexation of a property to the city into the Kingston Terrace District before the Lwy that includes the subject property and that meets the requirements set forth in Section 192-060E is adopted. The Lwy, the official legal Lwy, is currently being reviewed at the Department of State Lands. When the applicant came in to us almost a year ago, that Lwy was currently being worked on, and it has since been delayed outside of our control, outside of the applicant's control. Our draft Lwy, that is Office Department of State Lands, indicates that there are no wetlands on the properties, and the applicant has submitted a wetland delineation, which has been approved by the Department of State Lands. That also indicates that there are no jurisdictional wetlands on the property that would be considered significant or otherwise.
Well, it's just a technicality at this point.
Essentially, to ensure that the city was not stepping on the toes or going against any requirements from the state agencies that put these provisions in our code, on behalf of the applicant, we reached out to Department of State Lands and Department of Land Conservation Development staff to get statements from them, which I have included at the end of my report. Statement from Department of State Lands concurs that there are no jurisdictional aquatic resources, specifically no wetlands occur on these four properties. They front a main road, so there was like some access issue, and then there was a potential that getting construction onto the properties would have to go through a wetland. That would be a different scenario, but that's not the case in this case. Verbatim, the Department of State Lands states, therefore, the Department of State Lands has no objections to King City's proposed annexation of these properties prior to completion and DSL approval of the Kingston Terrace East Lwy. So it seems pretty clear that the Department of State Lands has given no objection. And then the LCP staff reciprocated that and basically said, if the Department of State Lands approves it, then DSL approves it as well, or it doesn't have any objection, and both sides are satisfied. So given those statements from the state agencies, the city feels it's appropriate to allow the exception to that code just because of the technicality. Other than that, as I mentioned, it's 100% consent. Metro has provisions in the 309 or in their boundary change code to allow for expedited decisions, but we don't have those same provisions in our code, so we have to go through the Type IV process. But the staff doesn't feel that there's any substantive--
Mr. Carter, could you explain what a Type IV procedure is? Because most of the audience won't know what it is.
Type IV is that it goes through the Planning Commission for recommendation and then to the city council for adoption. However, there are conditions of approval in the staff report, and just earlier today, city staff received a memo from the applicant proposing some amendments or disputes to those conditions. Given the timeline, the city staff hasn't had enough time to really go through what the applicant is proposing, and we feel it is probably the best course of action at this point to table the hearing to a time certain, to revisit it after staff has had a look at the applicant's proposal and the amendment. Table a recommendation. Table a recommendation.
So, but we still can take the public comment and get all of that in. Okay. Anything further, Mr. Carter?
I haven't enough to have any questions.
Thank you. Okay. Again, it's time for public comment. If you have a comment in favor of annexation, please come up now, and the city recorder will call you. This is strictly relating to the annexation, and your comments must relate to the specific criteria that Mr. Carter has discussed.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Would you prefer to have the applicant go first?
Oh, yeah, let's have the applicant go first. That wasn't in the memo.
Evening, commissioners. I'm Cody Jancheck with the applicant, I'm with Ken Randall Homes. I just want to introduce everyone, do a little clerical work here first. So with me tonight is my legal representative, Andrew Stamp. He's land use attorney and practicing law for quite a while in the state of Oregon, 30, 40 years.
28.
28.
Don't make him too old.
And then Steve Kay is the gentleman next to him. He's my planner that worked on this project with me. And then the video link here tonight, I have my traffic engineer, Melissa Webb, with Lancaster Mobley. Pete Johnson and Kim Johnson with Seven Oaks Engineering, my civil engineers. And then Ben Anderson also, a geo-pacific engineer, my geotechnical engineer, that possibly questions arise that they need to address. We're gonna start a little different, a little, we'll take a little different stuff here. Begin with Andrew, who's gonna quickly address the big picture here. We have our application, but what really drives it is the Kingston Square Master Plan. So he's just gonna go over that real quick, how that fits into our project, and how we, big picture, fit into that. And then from there, Steve Kay, go through all the technical requirements for the annexation and stuff.
Evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Andrew Stamp. I'm a land use attorney for the record at VF Law, address 6,000 Meadows, Suite 500, Lake Oswego, Oregon 97035. So I wanted to orient the Planning Commission a little bit on the big picture so that we're all on the same page. You know, Oregon's a planning mandate state. That means that we adopt comprehensive plans, and that the difference between a normal plan and a comprehensive plan is, the comprehensive plan is law. So it's not just a plan that you maybe want to follow or maybe don't. It becomes law. And then from there, the cities and counties will adopt zoning codes that are consistent with the comprehensive plan and consistent with state law requirements, and in your case, metro requirements. For landowners, that's a good news, bad news situation. The bad news being, the city gets to decide what you get to do with your land. You know, they plan it, and they tell you what you're gonna do with your land. And so for some people, that's not good, because they may not want to do something different. The good news is, is that if you like what's in the plan, and you want to develop consistent with the plan, then it's binding on everybody. It's binding on the city, it's binding on you, it's binding on the neighbors. And so, you know, once you've got a plan, that plan becomes law, and everyone just has to follow it. In this case, the city's done a lot of planning. They have this Kingston Terrace Master Plan. There's a lot of, I'm guessing, a lot of book blood put into this. Very nice document. Took a lot of work. A lot of big policy decisions were decided there. And as I read through it, I really liked it. I think it's excellent plan. It lays out where the roads go, very detailed. Tells you where your road's gonna be. If you look at your property, go, oh, they're gonna put a road on my property. Okay. Tells you where the intersections are gonna be. Oh, and by the way, with the roads, it says you can go 100 feet either direction on these intersections. It tells you where the parks are gonna be. It tells you the land use types. It tells you the neighborhood, what the neighborhood's gonna look like. You even have pictures in there to show you what the neighborhoods are gonna look like. It tells you the density. In our case, for this land, it's net 18 units per acre. That's, you know, that's a lot. That's a lot of, you know, it used to be, when I started, the average was like four to six units per acre, and now we're doing 18. You know, that's a lot of change. You know, it tells you the design elements. It even tells you how your house is gonna look. You don't get to decide. You know, it's like, oh, I want to do a Tudor-style house. No, well, no, it tells you what your house is gonna look like. And so what that means is, there's a lot of policy that goes into this, and those decisions have already been made. We then adopted specific zoning criteria in 16.114 that, it's a long section of the code, very detailed, that goes through point by point how to implement this plan. And really, what our application, if you looked at it, was 70 pages addressing each one of those little criteria in detail. So here we are. We're no longer in the planning stage, we're just in the implementation stage. We're saying, and this is really the first, I would say, normal-sized development, the ones you're gonna see more often than not, to implement this plan. You did have a very well-done, extremely detailed town center plan that I reviewed. That was a really excellent plan as well. I was really impressed with that. You know, and that was a very sophisticated plan with a very high-dollar amount behind it. But that's, those kind of big plans is not what you're gonna see. More often than not, what you're gonna see is these seven to 10-acre properties being brought to you by a developer who wants to implement your plan. So this is really the first of those sort of what I call the normal-sized developments. And with that, you know, the big overall picture that I want to paint tonight is that all we're doing tonight is deciding whether what Cody has brought forth and his designers have brought forth are consistent with the vision that's set forth in this plan.
Yeah. This is the annexation mission, and we really need to keep to those criteria.
It, well, the criteria for the annexation is this plan. And it's kind of interesting. Most annexations, back the old traditional annexations, they had something in it like, do we have adequate public facilities and services? That was always the traditional annexation criteria. Your criteria don't have that. Your criteria is, is it consistent with this? And if it is, then great, you annex. If not, then you don't annex. But that's really what the criteria is. And so when you're thinking about whether or not to annex tonight, you really analyze what our annexation is, what we've proposed, and you say, is this match the vision of the Beef Ben neighborhood? If the answer is yes, you annex. And I'll talk about more detail. I think there's a lot more to talk about with regards to the subject. The annexation's pretty basic, so I will leave it at that for now.
By the way, Mr. Stamp, we approved a subdivision that's smaller than yours.
Oh, did you?
About, what was it, a month and a half ago? The one east of Els here? Oh, yeah.
Okay, well, I wasn't aware of that. I guess when we started this project, no one had done it yet, so we were still in that phase of trying to figure out how it works.
Evening, planning commissioners. For the record, my name is Steve Kay. KFC Planning and Development Services, addresses P.O., Box 1920 in Silverston. To reiterate some of staff's comments earlier, the subject site is located just to the west of 137th and Beef Ben Road. It contains approximately 7.16 acres. There are currently single-family dwellings and accessory structures on this property. There are well and septic systems. And as far as the master plan goes, it was back in October 2023, there was a public outreach process that took more than a year to develop the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. And that was adopted for a 528-acre area. The site that we're looking at is highlighted there with the yellow boundary in the Beef Ben neighborhood. And-- slide. So the existing conditions plan that we included with our application illustrates that public facilities can be expanded to these properties to serve the site. Public water service is available from the city of Tigard. There's mainline connections available on Beef Ben Road and 137th Avenue. Public sanitary sewer service can be provided by obtaining an easement and connecting to an existing mainline on the east side of 137th and extend it to the site. And stormwater will be managed on-site in accordance with clean water services standards. We've included all the service availability letters that are required, including from the city of Tigard for water service, clean water services for sanitary sewer and stormwater management, private disposal for waste and recycling services, quality fire rescue for emergency services, and Tigard Twolington School District for school services, and all of them said that they can accommodate this annexation territory. The submitted annexation application has addressed all the applicable code criteria, including the policies of the comprehensive plan, Kingston Terrace Master Plan, relevant sections of the Metro Code, and Oregon Revised Statutes, and the statewide planning laws. We've included exhibits that are required for an annexation application, including the legal description and map, petitions that are required and certifications, and the wetland determination report, affirming that there's no wetlands on this property. So as such, we feel that the submitted materials meets all the criteria for approval. We thank you for your consideration and review this evening, and the project team will be available to answer your questions.
Okay, we'll check the rest of the team that's related to the development, correct? Yes. Is there anything else from the applicant? All right. Now, those who are in favor of the annexation-- Ronnie, you gonna call the names?
Do you listen to any of the testimony or--
Yeah. And make sure that Laurie's, Commissioner Petrie is with us. Do you want to do Zoom first, or? Okay. Okay. I wanted to ask her if she wants-- Don, which application are you wanting to testify on? The annexation proposal or the development?
Both.
Okay, well, you have three minutes.
Okay, but I'm not for it, so I'm gonna wait for--
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Are there any people in the audience that would like to testify in favor of the annexation proposal? Hearing none, okay, we'll go to those against. Dawn, you're on.
Okay. Hello, everybody. My name is, um, yes, can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, you can hear me.
Okay. My name is Dawn Mobley, and I live off of 137th Avenue in Rivermead Community. I just wanted to state that although I believe the development and the developers have done a great job and outreach and everything, my concern has more to do with that the Clean Water Services report has not been finished, and I just feel that King City should not be moving forward with any development until we have that completed. And also, we have been really trying hard to get the TSP, a relook at the TSP, and I feel that that needs to be done as well before we continue approving developments and annexations. So that's what I wanted to put in the record, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dawn. Okay. Let's talk, get people who are opposed to the annexation here in the group. Is there anyone who is neutral and just has a question about the annexation process? There's an opportunity to testify, ask questions. Well, at that point, then I will close the public comment at 6:33. And not having had any, any comments, I don't know that you're going to have any rebuttal. Is that correct?
Well, technically, there were two comments.
You'll need to come up to the, and re-identify yourself for the record.
For the record, my name's Andrew Stamp. I'm an attorney for the applicant. So what I heard were two comments. One is concern about Clean Water Services report, which, you know, as far as I can tell, that really relates to the subdivision, because Clean Water Services really doesn't have any, that report's really geared towards the subdivision, not towards annexation. So I don't really understand why that would be an approval criteria for the annexation. The issue about the TSP was raised, but it wasn't raised with enough specificity to make, help me understand what exactly about the TSP is the concern. Now, the TSP does have intersection improvements in it. It's a transportation system plan, so it recommends improvements, for example, to redesign the intersection at 137th and Beef Ben, which is going to be critical for the future of Kingston Terrace neighborhood. And that, you know, the Kingston Terrace, that intersection is really the gateway of this entire Kingston Terrace area coming from the east. And so really, that's the first intersection that needs to be fixed. Now, I understand the city has some different designs, different than the one that's currently in the TSP, and they may end up amending the TSP. But for our purposes, it doesn't really matter what the intersection ends up looking like. All that matters is that there is a plan to make it a better intersection than it is now. And that's really, you know, for our purposes, that's really sufficient.
Thank you, Mr. Stamp. It's time for, did you have anything else to say, staff?
I would reiterate, given agency comment, if it comes from the applicant, amendments to, proposed amendments to recommended conditions of approval of the staff report, that I would advise the planning commission to continue the hearing specifically to discuss your decision.
Okay.
I'll start up. I agree with you. We're bringing in a piece of land that's been surveyed and has lines, and it's the development on it that is, I mean, if you guys want to, you know, take the chance, that we'll, you know, let you have their development. But now, this is a piece of land. Do we want it part of King City?
Do you have any comments?
I have no comments.
Only that, I recognize we have 100% request of the owners. I would only, having read several legal descriptions, just make sure that we're doing the April 8th description of the annex section.
My feeling is it follows the criteria that are set forth in the statute. But as has been requested, that we continue this matter, when would we have a date certain? Because we have to continue to a date certain.
Probably be enough time to revise the staff report and have the planning commission meet next scheduled hearing, which would be the end of the month.
The last, the fourth Wednesday?
Yeah, so April 23rd at 6:00 PM.
Why aren't we sending it? They are waiting for more stuff to come in.
The conditions of approval, we received prior response from the applicant earlier today suggesting some revisions to conditions of approval for annexation and for the development plan review application. And given the time, the timing, the staff's going to have to look at those, amend, so I can't recommend approval of the conditions or not.
Which letter was that? You don't have it.
You don't have it?
Ronnie, will we have to reopen the public hearing?
Or, I mean, potentially.
No, because no one requested it.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, all right. Okay. With. All right. Okay. All right. Then what I propose is we have a set conditionally to a date certain, which will be April 23rd here at 6:00 PM. And in the interim, if somebody has within the next seven-day calendar days, they wish to write any comments, they will have to get it in. Seven days from today is, today's the 11th, ninth, so that would be the 16th, honor before April 16.
Sure, we'll make sure to post comments.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. And then the applicant will have following seven days before our, before the continued hearing to respond to any comments. With that, we can't take comments from the audience. That, we're continuing the hearing on the annexation. Do you have motion to continue it formally?
I move that we continue the hearing for the annexation on April 23rd.
Is all those in favor?
It's a time certain.
That's time certain, 6:00 PM.
It's a time certain, 6:00 PM.
Any other discussion? Do you need a roll call on this, or just hands will do?
Hands are fine, as long as Commissioner Petrie also.
Yeah. Yeah. Commissioner Petrie, you need to raise your hand if you're in favor of this. Okay.
I'm seeing Commissioner Bellows.
Yep. Yes.
All in favor.
Okay. All right. Now, we will move to the second hearing of the evening, and I have to get my paperwork for that.
Everybody wants to speak for this?
Oh, these are the people who want to speak? Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ronnie. I have to have help from the city recorder to keep me on track. Okay. Now, we're opening the hearing on the land use application, and I'm looking for the number here. 2024-07, the development plan and subdivision. And again, I will remind you that this is an unusual case, and the planning commission only can rank a recommendation to the city council. Okay. With that, again, I will have to read the appropriate stuff into the record. For in-person testimonials, a number dispenser is at the back of the city council room. Please grab a number if you have not already done so. Also located in the same place is the hearing comment registration form. Please write your name and all other required fields. For testimony via Zoom, please write your name, address, and whether you are in support, in opposition, or neutral in the comments section. Names will be assigned a number in the order that we receive comments in the chat box. When I call your number, please give your hearing comment registration form to the city recorder. Identify yourself, state your address, and I would appreciate if you would say if you live in the city of King City, or if you don't live in the city of King City. And make your statement. The amount of time will be three minutes per person. Again, we've got quite a few people, and I think most of you are going to want to testify. And that will be for individuals. Someone representing the neighborhood association gets 10 minutes. The applicant will get 15 minutes for their presentation, and there'll be up to 10 minutes for the applicant's rebuttal after all of the public testimony has come in. Again, we have to go through the process. Do any of the members of the planning commission wish to abstain from this matter? Hearing none? Okay. Do any of the members of the planning commission wish to declare a conflict of interest?
I'll declare the same potential conflict of interest.
Yeah.
Half mile south, it's the only ingress egress. I don't have any actual conflict of interest. I believe I can be fair and judge this on merit. And I've had two expertise contacts at neighborhood meetings.
Commissioner Bellows? Nope. And again, I live in Old King City and rarely go that direction. So I was, I do not need to say, I was on the city council when the concept plan was developed. Huh? Laurie? Do you have a conflict?
No, I do not.
Thank you. Sorry, Laurie.
That's okay.
Anyway, I was on the city council during the concept plan discussion, but went off the council before the plan was adopted. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdictions of planning commission to hear this matter? Ronnie? Does any member of the audience wish to challenge any individual member of the planning commission? Hearing none? Okay. Again, I know it's going to sound repetitious, but I have to say this again. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that if you fail to raise an issue in person, Zoom, or by letter today, or to the planning commission, you will be unable to raise that issue at a subsequent time on appeal to the city council, in this case, to the city council for its final decision, or at a subsequent time on appeal to the land use board of appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed toward the criteria that staff will describe, or other criteria in the plan or land use code, which you believe applies to the decision. Failure to specify specifically address the approval criteria that staff will describe also precludes the raising of an issue related to those criteria on appeal. At this time, I ask staff to give their reports.
Chair? So development plan two, subdivision and tree removal for Kensington Square, LU 2024-07. I would just like to remind the commission that given state laws restricting local jurisdictions on what they can and cannot deny and/or approve for these subdivisions and the construction of houses, there is really not room for discretion during recommended or decision-making processes. And so we have to look strictly at the criteria that are outlined in the staff report. So the applicant proposing a subdivision of 87 blocks with, 87 detached, or attached homes with a stormwater facility, a neighborhood collector street, and three local streets at the properties that are also proposed to be annexed near corner of Southwest 137th and Beef Ben Road on these four properties that exist there currently. It submitted a list of exhibits, including property deeds, application forms, development plans, architectural information, stormwater records, service provider letters, arborist reports, traffic impact studies, community meeting notes, street tree plans, et cetera. So I'm just going to kind of go through the list of criteria and address them, give you a summary of my findings. So chapter 1646, requirements for community meetings. The applicant satisfied that requirement. As far as I'm aware, they exceeded what's required by the city. They have multiple community meetings, first one meeting on October 21st, 2024. They provided the city with affidavits, notices, with everything to substantiate that they have held those meetings to satisfy that criteria. Chapter 16114 is the overarching district code that applies to Kingston Terrace, which is where this subdivision is located. And so that's the applicable criteria for the subdivision. 16114-060 is the design purpose applicability and standard, which kind of goes over the configuration of the lots, the design of the homes themselves, and sets those standards. After my review for articulation, eyes on the street, detailed design, the main entrances, all of the configurations of the lots and the floor plan satisfy those requirements. There was one during my initial review where the driveway needs to be, porch needs to be at least six feet deep for a horizontal transition, and their floor plan indicated that their porches in the front range from five to seven feet. So I discussed that with the applicant, and they have since submitted amended plans to satisfy, you know, as advanced as the limited design. That was the only thing that I really noticed. They're proposing three separate external units, so three different configurations for their units externally, two separate units for internal configuration. And all three of those units satisfy the design details for, including at least five of the features with covered porches, offset building facade, roofies, gable roof, et cetera. So that satisfies for that section. 16114-070, it tells the regulating plan, which is the marking map for Kingston Terrace. They are proposing one map, one street that is in that plan, which is Street A, in line with the regulating plan. The subdivision complies with the standard neighborhood, which is the neighborhood indicated where these properties are located in the comp plan. That is satisfied. Kingston, 16114-080, which is the Gulf Drive safe harbor, does not apply because there are no significant wetlands on the properties. The city staff has identified that the code does specifically call out no wetlands within 100-foot proximity of subject properties. And then that the Lwy is currently in a draft phase at the Department of State Lands, while there is perhaps a 99%. while there is perhaps a ninety-nine point nine percent certainty of no wetlands being there. There is not a hundred, hundred percent certainty, but that will be conditioned upon recommendation. Sixteen one one four zero nine zero is the upland wildlife and habitat conservation areas. Again, these subject properties do not contain any H B A property or lands as identified on figure sixteen one one four dash eleven in the comp plan. So they do not apply to that review, and that chapter is not applicable. The neighborhood locations, again, it's beef ben neighborhood. That all works, parks, open space and trail, they are not proposing to build any parks. So the provisions for parks do not apply because they're not proposing to build any parks. And that is in line with the prescribed park locations in the master plan. Neighborhood circulation, sixteen one one four one twenty. The only loophole that was identified is that the intersection of Street A, which is their neighborhood collector, and one thirty-seventh is about a hundred and sixty feet off of where it is identified in the regulating plan. However, the regulating plan allows a provision for a two-hundred-foot deviation. So it's within the two-hundred feet. And it also says that you can only change the route a hundred feet. And looking at it, the one intersection is a hundred and sixty feet offset. The other intersection is zero feet offset. The route materially is not changed within the regulating plan, so we found that to be satisfied. Parking and loading, they're not proposing any out-street parking. Other than subjective provisions for adequate facilities. They have provided the city with all the necessary service provider letters, and they'll have to go through approvals from clean water services and utility companies as they do their installation and construction plans. And then the development plan review process details what they need to submit to the city to, for us to do an adequate review, and the applicant submitted everything to the city to provide that adequate review. Landscaping and beautification, landscaping will be done primarily by homeowners. They provided the city with a street tree plan, which we found to be satisfactory. But it will require more detailed landscaping plans during construction when they submit for their maintenance permits. Tree removal, they're proposing to remove a hundred and seven trees on site. They provided an arborist report, detail on health of those trees, but essentially all the trees they propose to remove are due to construction activities and will be replaced. But there's no, there's no code for mitigation of tree removal during construction if it's not within a habitat area. Circulation and access, the only access point to the development is on one hundred thirty-seventh and the neighborhood collector. And then by virtue of that, then the only access point off-site will be beef ben and one hundred thirty-seventh. But cells are wide enough to accommodate emergency vehicles and are in line with the prescriptions in the C S P. Flood plane and drainage hazard areas, they're not proposing to build anything or do any construction with flood planes, so that chapter does not apply. Vision clearance, that will be addressed. Vision clearance is when you're at a corner and you need to have a thirty-five-foot angle to be able to see when you're making turns. That's usually instructed by landscaping or fences. So when the city requires landscaping plans at a future date or fence plans at a future date, that will be checked at that time. And then the subdivision is more or less showing that they are meeting their density requirements, meeting all of their configuration for their lots. It's just kind of an administrative, and that was satisfied. And then the neighborhood circulation. Keith, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line. What would you like me to speak about?
Can you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Keith Lyden. I'm a planning consultant, and I still provide some assistance to King City.
Keith was our prime, was previously our land use consultant.
Could you please provide your findings for chapter sixteen two one two? Summary.
Okay. All right. I guess I wasn't prepared to do this, so just a second. So I'm sorry, what do you want me to speak about? Sixteen two one two? Neighborhood circulation?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Yeah, I reviewed, sixteen two one two is about neighborhood circulation, and there are a number of requirements there about block dimensions and circumference around blocks, access points for pedestrians, and that sort of thing. I did review the plans related to the requirements in that section and found that it meets those requirements.
Thank you, Keith. And then going back to, I'll just add it back. The city did receive a number of agency comments from other agencies. The city of Tighers did not have any concerns about the development. Clean Water Services, their official comments, which details compliance with the standards, those client hook, client measurements for reference in the conditions. The Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife did not have any comments or concerns about the development. And Walton Valley Fire and Rescue, at the time of the report, indicated that access looked good. However, after the report was published, it was brought to T B F N R's attention that there was a lack of a secondary access point under the development. And they basically, they gave the city a formal letter, and the applicant will either have to provide a secondary access point or install a T B F N R certified, like a fire certified sprinkler system in each of the homes to satisfy T B F N R requirements. The city also received comments from Washington County. Again, these comments are not approval criteria. However, I do think it's important to note that Washington County identified a hazard concern on one hundred thirty-seventh between, about one hundred thirty-seven, on Beef Ben, between one hundred thirty-seventh and Peachtree, basically the double left turn queuing issue. Specifically, they called out that it is a concern, and there will have to be some sort of mediation or coordination negotiated there. But that is more or less outside of the city's control and also outside of our jurisdiction because the city does not have jurisdiction over Beef Ben or one thirty-seventh. The commission had any questions?
Who does have?
Washington County, yes.
One hundred thirty-seventh?
Yes, one hundred thirty-seventh, yes. Based upon the meeting of the approval criteria, however, going back to what I mentioned before, the city was presented with a revised condition proposal by the applicant. And so the city staff's recommendation is to... City staff's recommendation is to continue the hearing, assess the conditions, and the... And keep seven days open for...
So it'd be similar to the twenty...
Seven days for rebuttal.
Twenty-third?
For the same day as the annexation, so here's a point third.
Commissioner Petrie, did you have any questions with staff? Commissioner Petrie?
Yes, go ahead.
Did you have any questions from staff?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I don't know if they should be staff or applicant. Throw it out or wait till we discuss? Throw it out?
Well, now we get, now we get presentation.
Okay, a couple. Yeah, the site is defined, you know, for the four tax lots, pretty much in the wetland inventory we're talking about. So I have a couple of questions on the sewer line, which extends beyond that site. And on to crosses the Bonneville Power and the Mobile Home, you know, P G E transmission lines. And I don't actually need an answer to these. And when we had the work session and presented questions, a lot of my questions all got answered, so I'm not asking them again. These are just things, I mean, that's great. So this is just kind of throwing these out, and maybe, maybe in the meantime, I can get an answer on it. So... Question is, does the applicant have some kind of agreement for the easement or the sewer line? Because this is land that they don't control. I haven't seen that they control the Bonneville Power or the Mobile Home Park. So there'll have to be something there. The sewer, the land under the transmission line, the Kingston Terrace, L W I, goes from one thirty-seventh west, and the land under the transmission lines, in my understanding, has an L W I that goes with the west side trail, also under review.
Not quite. It has a delineation, which was approved by Department of State lands. It was not required to...
Okay. So, you know, it's, it's, my question is, we have construction of that. Per scale, and my scale is reasonable, but it's not exact. I'm finding the sewer line eighty-four feet from an existing wetland as it crosses through. And, and I believe there's things, things to do if it's within a hundred feet. So, um, got that, got that question there. The new manhole, the last one right before it jogs into existing line, the manhole station nineteen plus thirty point six six. I was looking at that yesterday. It's on the base map of the... Wetland application for if we submitted. It's shown as a non-jurisdictional ditch. Just, it doesn't show in the base map because it's, there's brush around it, and it looked like the surveyors didn't crash through the brush. So anyway, yesterday, you know, as I was standing there, it's about ankle deep in water and flowing water through there that heads south to a field inlet, kind of at the edge of Edgewater. Does that matter? Does, you know, questions, questions like that. And I would have, if this wasn't a preliminary thing, have suggested a condition of, the current condition of twenty-four development activities, blah, 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 can't take place prior to the receipt of approval from D S L. And I would have said, including the off-site sewer line. The, also have to get approval, uptight that.
Clean Water Services approval?
And potentially, you know, D S L, because we got water. It's within, it's within a hundred feet of the wetland.
Okay, all right.
According to my scale.
Okay.
I had previously had questions about the fire access. You got the response, you responded to the response? All makes sense, installation of sprinklers, take care of it for me. I, I would have questions on the one hundred thirty-seventh in the Washington County, and I'm sure this will come up again. They've got, you know, we have a, even, even a more revised, revised T I S here, and the Washington County letter addressing a safety concern. And, you know, I understand it's different jurisdictions and all that. As I, I would, I would hope that in, as we have this pause, that there can be perhaps some agreement as to something that says, this is a safe solution. And that's, that's all I'm looking for. I, I know it's currently a little tricky to drive, and that's without extra traffic. Had my question about who maintained the stormwater treatment answered. I've had my questions about the twenty-five, over a twenty-five-year flood. I understand that it overflows to adjacent property, but I also understand that it follows the current clean water system code. And they're working on more, but it doesn't exist yet. That's it.
Did I ask you if you have any questions?
We haven't turned to staff.
Oh, staff, of staff, no. Okay.
Well, actually, I do.
Um, I, you mentioned they're not planning any parks. Would there be any problem if the developer decided at some point to put in a pocket park?
They would have to come back for a major modification.
Okay.
Changes the density.
Oh, okay.
They're over the density now, aren't they?
Yeah, but I think the code reads that it changes the density at all.
Okay, okay, all right. That was my only question, and I can go. Um, all right. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of this application? And we will start with Zoom.
We have to hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's, I'm very sorry. That was getting...
Long day.
It has been a long day. I started at seven A M. morning.
We do better in the morning, yeah.
Good evening again. For the record, my name's Steve K. Cascadia, Planning and Development Services. Address P O Box nineteen twenty in Silverton. So as we discussed with the annexation application, all future development is regulated by the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. In particular, the applicant needs to comply with the Beef Ben neighborhood standards, which apply to all the area that's colored orange on this map. The standards dictate what type of uses are allowed, how access is provided, how utilities need to serve the site. Meeting the minimum density requirement of eighteen dwelling units per net acre, eighty-seven single-family attached dwelling units are proposed. The submitted preliminary plat indicates that the subdivision meets the minimum lot area and lot dimension standards. Since the site fronts Beef Ben Road, which is designated as a minor arterial street, access is proposed from one hundred thirty-seventh Avenue. And in compliance with the city's transportation system plan, additional right-of-way is dedicated along both one hundred thirty-seventh and Beef Ben Road. Consistent with the master plan, the applicant is also dedicating right-of-way along the southern boundary of the site for the extension of a new neighborhood route street for the Beef Ben neighborhood. And the proposed internal streets and the pedestrian connection to Beef Ben Road have been laid out to meet the city's buckling standards. The applicant... The applicant's preliminary plat includes a large tract in the southeast corner of the site for the development of a stormwater facility. The applicant is proposing to install improvements along the Beef Ben Road frontage to meet Collector Street, uh, standards, or minor arterial street standards, um, and then, uh, along one hundred thirty-seventh to meet Collector Street standards. And, uh, a new east-west neighborhood route street will be developed with the half-street improvements along the southern boundary of the site. And internal access within the site is provided with the development of new local streets. And a pedestrian path is proposed to link the internal sidewalk system with Beef Ben Road. The proposed transportation improvements are consistent with the Kingston Terrace Master Plan and provide connectivity to parcels to the northwest, uh, to the northeast, west, and south of the site. Public water service for the development will be provided by the city of Tigard, and connections will be made to both Beef Ben Road and one hundred thirty-seventh Avenue so that water is looped through the site.
Excuse me, interrupter for just a minute. Um, that area is currently, they're on well water. Connection from Tigard right to coming down Collier or Peachtree to you? Or is it coming down Beef Ben, uh, from?
There, there are currently two main lines that are adjacent to the property. So one is on one hundred thirty-seventh and one main line is on East Central. We're connecting to both of those.
Okay.
Moving them through the street.
Thank you.
Uh, the, uh, utility plan also indicates that public sanitary sewer will be provided by obtaining an easement, several blocks to the south. Um, the applicant, we can come up later and explain what the status of that easement is for you. Will be connecting at that location, extending the main line on the east side of, uh, one hundred thirty-seventh Avenue, and then extending a new main line which will serve the Beef Ben Neighborhood. Uh, all stormwater from impervious surfaces is managed by detaining and infiltrating drainage by an onsite facility in accordance with Clean Water Services standards. And as required, the stormwater facility has been sized and designed to current standards so that runoff will not be directed to neighboring properties. The proposed development includes the construction of townhome units on individual lots. The single-family development includes two to four units per structure. All the units include one-car garages and driveways to permit parking for a second vehicle. And approximately twenty-six additional on-street parking spaces are also provided with this development. The application includes a smittle of architectural plans to demonstrate that the attached single-family dwellings meet the Kingston Terrace Master Plan standards.
Excuse me, could you indicate where the parking spaces that are on the street?
Sure, I, if we go back a slide, um, so they would be on Street C on the west side along that, that length. Uh, the next street over. Yes.
Uh, this one? And so is it wide enough to allow for parking on both sides?
Parking on one side.
And that there will be signage indicating that?
Yes, there will need to be signage.
Okay.
And there's also additional parking on the south side of Street C, which is the northern street. And, uh, if, if the city permits parking on one hundred thirty-seventh, it is going to be widened enough there to allow parking on that street as well. Um, and if we go back to this. The, um, so the building elevations include articulation, um, with covered entryways. There's eyes in the street standards that are met by providing windows and entry doors of facades facing the right-of-way. And, uh, all the proposed setbacks within the development meet or exceed city standards. The, the city's detailed design standards are also met by providing covered porches, offsets in the building face, and articulated roof structures. And there's transitional space for the proposed townhomes with deeper front porches. And there's also landscaped private open space areas that are provided in the rear yard of every townhome unit, every townhome lot. Uh, so based on the submitted materials and staff findings, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with applicable sections of the Neighborhood Development and Zoning Code. We appreciate your review this evening. Um, there's several members of the project team that are, uh, on hand tonight. So, uh, specific traffic questions can be answered by them.
I have a question. Sewer line, is it going to come down one thirty-seventh and then into the development?
Sewer line? Yes. Want to maybe elaborate on the street easement? Again, Cody Johnnycheck, Ken Randall-Holmes, two hundred point five, nine seven zero three. Um, for lines, we will need to obtain easements. Um, they run south from our development and then cross the BPA right-of-way. Actually, it's their own, their own land and then across private property. Um, we have been working on permitting and getting the easement from the BPA. We're on the final step of that right now. Um, and then we are purchasing, on the private property, we are purchasing, um, the easement from private property owners.
How far south from the development? Is it going to leave one thirty-seventh?
Um, approximately three lots south.
Okay. Did you, in your, um, neighborhood meeting, inform the adjacent neighbors that if their septic tanks fail, county will require them to immediately, um, join sewer?
Um, I don't know if I did or not. I can't recall all the conversations we had.
It did come up as an issue and, and that was.
I, I just want to make sure that the adjacent property owners are aware of that because the new county law is if you're within three hundred feet of a sewer line and your septic fails, you must.
The good news is you have a sewer to connect to also in that situation. Um, to further expand on your question, Dean, um, a part of our, you know, in the record, Clean Water Services Provider Letter, that was about a six-month process for us to obtain. Uh, it was a very intensive process. Um, part of that process that is in the record is we actually conducted a site assessment, an environmental site assessment. And it's in the record that they're actually, that is part of that site assessment, they're actually, are no wetlands within a hundred feet of our site. Um, and that site assessment for Clean Water Services, um, is in the record. Um, and part of obtaining that letter from Clean Water Services was for us to demonstrate that. Um, Dean, you pointed out, Commissioner, the, uh, that we are crossing a wetland area as per the west side trail. Um, we are avoiding that by drilling through that entire area. We do not, um, dirt or unearth, or we remain outside the buffer zones of those, um, wetland areas. Um, that's how we're able to obtain, um, that's our current plan, that's how we're able to obtain that Clear Water Services letter. And then as far as parks, um, can you pull up? I'm pulling up the Kingston Terrace Master Plan, master parks. So if you look at the top right of the presentation, you see our little area there, the yellow. So they, the Kingston Terrace Master Plan does not envision any parks, um, within our area. We are within, literally across the street from the west side trail, and then within six hundred feet of the neighborhood park, south future neighborhood envisioned park to the southwest. Um, and part of that, if you look where those little pockets of neighborhood parks are first developed, the Kingston Terrace Master Plan, is, it's right just south of the zoning that encompasses our area. The cheese, the higher density, the more zoning. Um, they place, I'm guessing, they envision the parks right on the edge of that. Um, to get the required zoning they wanted against the Beef Ben Road. Um, and so allow that area to have access to parks. And then part of our smittle, hopefully I've had a chance to read it, was the, uh, you had many great questions from your planning workshop. Um, we tried to formally answer them for you and stuff. Um, you know, there's limited time here and stuff. Andrew, do you have?
I'll be able to answer more questions.
I wanted to follow up on, uh, for the record, Andrew Stamp, V F Law. I wanted to follow up briefly on the parks question. You know, at the beginning of my talk, I talked about the plan as being law. And clearly, the, the plan tells you where your parks are going to be now. And so someone's land, there's a park on it. They're like, wow, that's a bummer. I wanted to build houses. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to build a park. They're like, well, I can't make any money off of parks. Like, well, we collect STCs from everyone else who isn't building a park, including developer here, and we create a pot of money so that we can compensate the people who have the park on their land. We compensate them for the park that they're giving us. And that's, if someone gets the, you know, from a development standpoint, you're like the short end of the stick, right? Because they're going to put a park there. But that's how that's worked out. It's those system development charges that equalize the, the burden on the entire community. Every landowner there, when they build, they'll, they'll put money in the kitty. Uh, and do you know what the park STC is for? It's a considerable amount per unit. And, you know, that money gets in, put into a fund. And then when the city wants to, uh, actually build a park, they have that, those monies available for capital improvements. So, I mean, and that's, and you're, the Kingston.
Seven hundred.
Eight thousand.
Seven hundred per unit.
Per unit. So that's quite a bit of money. Um, this, you know, someone talked about pocket parks. And this plan is so specific, it literally says that the only place that pocket parks are allowed is in the town center. So it, you know, here, and you can see them on the, on the map there, down on the left side. Those little parks that are close to where we are are called neighborhood parks, and it even defines what those parks should look like. I mean, that, when I said this plan is very specific, I mean, kudos to the city for doing such a, uh, a specific plan because it really helps make things, uh, predictable. And predictable is kind of the hallmark of what a developer needs to invest money, that they need to invest. I mean, like, I was talking to somebody today, I asked, how much money have you already put into this? He's like, three hundred thousand dollars, just to come up with some paper plans. So, you know, it's, it's, it's very expensive. Alright, so what I really want to talk about was the letter from Washington County. And I don't know if you've seen it yet.
Yes, I think everyone's.
Okay. And I submitted a response yesterday. Because I got the, I didn't realize it was a draft, but I got a draft.
Yeah, I wanted to have that on the record. I wanted a draft. And I received the final comments, Washington County.
I kind of just assumed that they'd left the draft on there because it, it didn't take it off. But anyway, I responded to it anyway. I was kind of upset by that letter because.
Excuse me, Stamp, is that part of the reason that we're doing the continuation because of his response?
I just, I received numerous letters from the applicant, from agencies, including TCSR, Washington County, all within the last seven days. So I think it's reasonable to have that position of continuing the hearing because of the placement. And including the attorney's, his response, his response to a draft.
Well, we haven't seen that, so.
Okay. Well, I did submit it yesterday. One of the things I'd say about that is, is that a lot of times these issues don't really crystallize until we see the staff report. And, and like, we didn't see the, the Washington County letter until last Friday. So we were really kind of, it put us in a bind to be able to respond to all these things by the time of the hearing. And that's pretty typical. I mean, we see that all the time, that the state losses, the first evidentiary hearing, if any new evidence is submitted, which invariably it is, uh, that you have to keep the record open for at least seven days. So it's very typical to, to keep the record open and, and come back at a, at a later meeting and make your decision, or in this case, a recommendation. Um, let's, let's talk about that letter, the Washington County. So the Washington County Engineering Department writes a letter where they said, you know, we've identified what we consider to be a safety problem based on some engineering tables from nineteen eighty-five. Okay. Well, we, today, we submitted, uh, testimony from our engineer who basically says that county's concerns are, are not well-founded. But beyond that, the, the county says, because we've identified a safety hazard, that you have to redesign your subdivision. And I'm like, are you kidding me?
You sure there's a safety hazard?
Uh, yeah. What they're, what they're saying is, is that one thirty-seventh and Peachtree are so close together. And they have, what we used to call in the older days, a suicide lane. I guess traffic engineers have a different name for it now. But when you have a, a, a turn lane in the middle, but it's not a dedicated turn lane, it's a turn lane for two sets of turning movements. It is potential, and if you've been driving a long time, you, like on eighty-second, you've probably had this happen where you went into the turn lane, someone coming at you, going in your turn lane, laughing, and you had to go outside the turn lane. Rather than risk a head-on, head-on collision. Uh, so that is, that's the concern with the intersection now. Now, the big picture solution is, under the current TSP, the solution is to move Collier over to where it connects with one thirty-seventh and then close Peachtree to intersect with Collier. I understand that the city, after further consideration, has a new idea, which in order, and the new idea is to move one thirty-seventh over to connect with Collier, which would make that so-called suicide lane longer and make it less likely to have a, a collision problem. One of those solutions is going to happen. Right now, the solution that's in the TSP is to, uh, move Collier. But, you know, when talking to Max about that, they said, well, there's a lot of power lines up there that's going to be kind of expensive. Maybe it's easier just to move one thirty-seventh. So that may be the long, that's, they, you'd, you'd have to amend your TSP to, and your Kingston Terrace Master Plan in order to come up with that solution, but that's something the city could do. As it is, as it states right now, Washington County is collecting, they call it a TDT, a Transportation Tax. They tried to be clever back in the nineteen nineties. They said, we don't want to have an STC. We want to call it a tax because we're.
Transportation development.
Yeah, they, they called it that because they were trying to get outside of the STC statute. And the Court of Appeals and the Oregon Supreme Court said, no, I don't care what you call it, it's still a system development charge. And they, which was kind of obvious to everyone except the county. Uh, but they still call it a TDT. Think of it as an STC. It's subject to stay law. So they're collecting funds to rebuild that intersection, one way or the other. And I think the city is too. Um, and, and there's going to be money from Metro and other sources that would help fix that problem. And, and the Kingston Terrace Master Plan and the TSP goes into the funding mechanisms for that. It's all laid out in the plan. So the, so the only question is, is when is the county going to execute that? They said, well, we've got some other priorities. And we, we don't think it's that important. And they said, as a matter of fact, it even doesn't make our top three hundred and fifty list of dangerous intersections. So it's really not that bad. So that really tells you everything you need to know. But the idea that they would tell us to redevelop, to redevelop our subdivision with an access onto Beef Ben Road, when your plan specifically says that we can't do that, it would be illegal to do it, um, is, it, it, it frankly was a little upsetting. And, and, you know, from, for the, for the county to kind of disrespect the city and say, you know, we really don't care what your plan says. We're the county. We just kind of do whatever we want. That, that, that should be highly problematic to the city. Because if you signed off on this plan, they didn't appeal it, they had a chance to appeal it, they could have appealed it. Someone else appealed it, a citizen in the area, maybe, maybe it was even more than one citizen, but.
Mr. Stamp, I think we've gotten the point.
Yeah, okay. Well, it, it's really important because the answer to the county is not redevelop the subdivision. The answer is reprioritize this intersection, one thirty-seventh and Beef Ben.
Well, I don't know how much development you've done in South Washington County, but we've been the bastard stepchild. And develop, we are the last to get any roads improved. And that's why you heard it wasn't that high a priority because there hasn't been enough screaming from this part of the county.
I can help scream if you need some help. I'm good at it. Uh, but.
That's why.
Yeah.
That's the answer you did.
It, well, I, my response to them is, you know, essentially, don't really care what you think, county.
But you do realize both Beef Ben Road and one thirty-seventh are Washington County roads. The city has no jurisdiction. city has no jurisdiction over those roads.
Let's talk about that. That's a really important point. Now, in my letter from yesterday, I talk about that, because I, I was trying to, you know, these are technical issues, and I was trying to kind of frame it in a, in a, you know, more, as easy to, as easy way possible. So, I asked the question, who's the decision maker? And what I want to tell you is, at, at the outset, is you are the decision maker for where the roads go, where they connect with Beef Ben, and where they connect with 137th, not the county. They have no say in the matter. Zero. Zero. Huh?
I disagree with you.
Well, I'm just telling you what the law is.
Your, your interpretation.
It's not my interpretation, it's the law. I, I literally have been doing this 28 years.
Well, I've been a land use attorney for 44 years, so I have some history.
Well, then, if you've been a land use attorney, you know that when you make a land use decision, it's final, correct?
Upon expiration of all appeals, yes.
Right. So, what, so if they don't like your decision, they have to appeal it to Luba, correct? And once that appeal process is over, then the only thing they can do is implement that with ministerial permits.
It doesn't always work that way.
Hmm, okay. Uh, I mean, the...
I think you've made your point, Mr. Scott.
Okay. Well, I've won these cases, so I, you know, I've been to Luba 100 times.
Well, I don't want to talk about the number of cases.
Um, oh, so let's say they took this to Luba. Let's say, oh, we don't like, where you have the road on 137th, which is consistent with the plan. What would they argue to Luba? We've got some other ancient standards, that, engineering standards, that, that aren't even, because they were passed before Dolan versus City of Tiger, they were passed before the transportation system plan. They have no argument, because this is the law. And if it's in here, they lose. So, you know, that, that's really how that works. Uh, nothing they, they have no say-so where any of this goes. Now, when you say they own the road, what does that mean? Well, that means they get to fix the potholes, that means they get to issue access permits, facilities permits, ministerial permits. And obviously, if you're a land use attorney, you know the difference between a discretionary permit and ministerial permit, they don't get to decide any of the policy questions, they don't get to decide any of the land use questions. It's pure ministerial. And there's case law on this, from the Court of Appeals. So, in my letter, I go over, what are the standards for the preliminary plat decision? Well, you've got, the regular subdivision standards are in teen 196, 060. Nothing in there about that. And then you've got specific standards where the regulating plan, that's the law, teen 114, there was a picture of it earlier, it specifically says where the access intersections go, and that's really the beginning and end of that discussion for the county. So, I mean, the only correct response to the county is, no, you don't redesign the subdivision just because you're three, four years late coming up with...
I would appreciate that you submit information with every case that you are relying on, so that our city attorney has the opportunity to review it before carrying it to you.
Okay, and I did, I did send him this, I did send it to the county attorney. Uh, and so, we can do that. What?
Are the packets...
Oh, oh, yes, it, I sent it to you, so you...
I couldn't get it today.
Yeah, yeah.
This, I mean, I know about it, but the fact of the matter is, and I was told it wasn't very detailed, and it would be useful to have, include the holdings, including the dicta, if you find those pages. Yeah, but he knows what I'm talking about. I would like you to brief it, please.
Okay, I, I did. It's seven pages of single space.
Well, I haven't seen any of that.
No, I, I've briefed it well, and, you know, the open record period, we can get a response from the city attorney, we can get a response to, uh, the county, from the county, that's fine. But, you know, we, we couldn't land use plan in Oregon if we had different decision makers. You can't have two chiefs and no Indians, you got...
We're being fought right now.
Well...
You well know, I have...
But when it comes to a hearing like this, there's only one decision maker, that's the, you know, the county doesn't get to decide. They, they, they had a chance to appeal this plan, right? And they didn't appeal it. That's the end of it.
I, I understand, Mr. Scott.
Okay.
I see your point.
All right.
Thanks, you're done.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there, um, any place in the future where we will have jurisdiction over 137th?
Maybe.
Likely, yes. The city will likely have jurisdiction over 137th at some point. Right now, the area in question is external jurisdiction control by Washington County.
Okay.
Well, what would be helpful is to work with the legislature, she passed a law that says that jurisdiction transfers upon annexation. The idea that the county maintains roads that are in the city's jurisdiction doesn't make any sense. They do it for financial reasons, because they're fighting over who gets the pot of money.
Well, in Washington County, most of the cities, in the, north of Cooper Mountain, most of their major roads are still county roads. Tigard has, in fact, transferred almost all of the roads in their jurisdiction to their, to their control. But that is, Tigard's an outlier, and King City is not in a position currently to take jurisdiction.
You know, it's interesting, uh, ODOT has the same thing, where there are ODOT facilities that run through the city of Portland, which makes no sense at all. And when I was a young land use attorney, back in 1998, I hate to admit how long ago it was, uh, Tim Ramis and I wrote a Law Review article about this very topic, where, because we were kind of upset with ODOT, and ODOT's gotten a lot better since then, they've...
You must have worked at O'Donnell Ramis.
Yes. I, I started under Tim. Uh, rest in peace. But Tim and I wrote that article, because we were having a lot of trouble with ODOT, because they're concerned about mobility, running the, you know, getting the traffic to go fast, and landowners really want access, and those are two competing priorities. And trying to get ODOT to be a growth management agency instead of a mobility agency was really tough. They've gone, they've come a long way since then.
We deal with 99W.
Yes, you know what I'm talking about. Um, but anyway, it's an interesting read, you know, if you want, want to read it, it's 30 years later, it's, some of the same problems still exist, but anyway.
Um, your time is more than, and we have, need to hear from the transportation planner.
Okay.
And I have a question for your, your, your engineer.
Okay. All right, well, I've taken up enough of your time, but that was probably the most important thing to talk about anyway, was the, was the county letter. Because that's, it's kind of like, that's essentially a denial, if, because we're not going to redesign the subdivision.
I'm trying to check, hold off on her, because we're going to get additional questions and comments, so I'll have to hear from my traffic engineer, or my civil engineer, traffic engineer.
I, I would like to hear, talk to, talk to the civil engineer right now, please.
Um...
Is your engineer here?
Uh, he, he's going to be here, he's available, yeah, virtually. You want to pull up Steve Johnson, involve him to present. Um, the, um, I have a specific question, I'm dressed right up to bat.
Yeah, I do, I have a very specific question.
Right now, they're pulling up my civil engineer, not the traffic engineer.
Hi, this is Steve at Seven Oaks, can you guys hear me?
Yeah. When you were doing your plan, were you aware that there are a number of broken culverts under 137th? About 10 years ago, one of them totally failed and Beef Ben collapsed, and they finally fixed that one. I had reported it to USA, the former name of the entity, about 25 years ago, and Clean Water Services has ignored the issue. And I believe one of the broken culverts is in that stretch, back, backing to your development.
Our, our current plans with the improvements along 137th is to replace and put in a storm drain pipe along our frontage, and eliminate the culvert along our frontage.
No, the culvert under, under Beef Ben, there's one to the west, along the frontage of your, of the development, along Beef Ben. There's a number of them. It caused a tremendous amount of flooding in Rivermead, west of, of 137th. And I want to make sure that you're aware of those, and hopefully can get Clean Water Services to get off the dime.
Okay. Um, yeah, we can, we can look at the, the survey and, and head out to the site again to, to review it, um, some more.
Yeah, obviously, you don't see it in the summer.
We'll, we'll make it more of a...
Funny thing, water goes downhill.
Are you sure that that's in front of the frontage for the three properties in question?
No, it's the properties that are abutting Beef Ben Road.
Right.
There is a culvert somewhere, and I can't remember exactly, but there's a culvert in that area that failed.
Maybe a little bit of a...
There's, there's multiple culverts. There were at least three major ones, and one was the one, approximately 147th, and there's two more between 137th. And I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. And it sounds like you weren't really aware, so that you double-check before doing developments.
I have a question for him too.
Yeah, go ahead.
I didn't let him finish his presentation. Are we in official, we can ask questions?
My...
Civil engineer?
Yes. Okay, um, my question is this, I am not a civil engineer, um, or a land use attorney, uh, but I have my landscape architecture education, and I'm looking at your drainage down the streets, they go, um, can't find all my mesh lines on this stuff, but, um, basically, B and C, or D, the two north-south streets are running into Street A. Where does the water from A go, and how does it get into the detention pond?
Yeah, so, the, the water from the north south, north-south streets, B and D, all flow to the south to Street A. There's a series of curving gutters and inlets, and the water is collected periodically in those inlets, and are discharged either through a storm drain pipe and a headwall into the basin. And then, any surface water still on A street that's past those inlets, there's also a Parkway culvert that will come down and surface discharge into the basin.
But the basin's uphill, is it? Um, because I don't have my mask, my mask on here.
Yeah, so everything's flowing to the south and to the east into the stormwater basin.
Okay, is the stormwater ba, I don't have the grading of the, the basin itself, and how do we get into it?
Steve, I can help out here, Cody Johnson, the record. Um, the, those facilities are located south and lower than the basin, however, the sewer lines run under the ground, the gravity flow back into the basin. So, the way all the grading works out is, you still even know the south, the street is south of the pond, I think that's where the stormwater water gets back uphill to it.
Right.
The storm drain, hits the storm drain, and the pipe flows back down towards it, there's enough...
Okay, there's enough grading that, okay, that's, that's all I wanted to know.
Our facility handles the entire site and 137th.
And I also had a question, and this is for interpretation for everybody involved. Um, our, um, natural disasters and hazardous, seven stormwater, B, and this is in the, I think, the staff comments, requires new developments that contribute water runoff into the system to share the cost of modernizing the system. And, um, because we were talking about, and your attorney addressed it, that we have runoff coming from the north, that is unfortunate, but we need to take care of it. It's part of our responsibility, and I believe that it's, I'm not sure if it's codified exactly right, and it's open to interpretation, but in modernizing our stormwater facilities, you may be required to accommodate more water that is coming down than only off of your property. But I know that in general, um, you know, keep the water on your property and don't let it get on the next guy's. But we have a problem in King City, so that's something to take a look at and something to discuss with Mike and Max.
Yeah.
Cody, I check here. Hey, Steve, can you actually adjust the technicalities of how our stormwater is going to handle our facility and the discharge of it?
Absolutely. So, like, like we were talking about, all the stormwater from the site gets collected through a series of catch basins and gets ultimately discharged into our basin. Part of the requirements is that we need to have hydro modification, which is to infiltrate a certain, certain storm event, so, um...
Sorry, I'm going to chime in here, this is Kim Johnson, I'm also listening in, I can speak a little bit more to stormwater. So, um, the design of the detention pond, obviously, we're complying with CWS criteria in that we are collecting all the runoff from our site and our development, detaining it, infiltrating it, so it will not exceed the 25-year storm event. And basically, looking at the pre-developed condition, comparing it to the post-development. So, we are not increasing runoff from what is currently out there now up to the 25-year storm event. Um, and I know there was also concern of what happened above a 25-year storm event. And we've gone an additional step internally to evaluate the 100-year storm event. And basically, the system as it's designed right now will not exceed the pre-developed 100-year storm event. So, what that means is, we are, as the development, not increasing up to the 100-year storm event for the development, because that detention basin has been essentially oversized to accommodate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Any other questions for the applicant?
So, Cody Johnson, just to be really clear, because it took me a few times to under, completely understand that, so right now, there's runoff from the site, because there's an existing 137th, there's just the site, so that flows down into the ditch right next to the property on 137th. So, that's the pre-development part, flowing to that ditch affecting downstream culverts, et cetera, et cetera. Post-development, our detention pond is so big that we're actually reducing the current amount of water that flows into the ditch. Um, and I didn't fully actually understand until today, so we're not ever actually adding capacity to that ditch, more than is current, exceeding today's standards, so, and that is the big picture with, like, you were talking about with Clean Water Services trying to plan and reduce future, or capacity, because their current, um, criteria is so big, or stringent, that that's how they're...
So, basically, you're telling me that, right now, nobody's taking care of the stormwater and it's going into the ditch, and you're going to take care of it, right? That's kind of it, sounds like it. Yeah, okay, that's how I understand it.
I was going to ask, anyone else have questions? Mr. Petrie, did you have any questions for the applicant?
Uh, no, I think they've really covered it quite well. Thanks for him asking.
Okay, thank you.
I have, oh, you have more questions? I have more questions, yeah, thank you. Um, I, with my tree background, I'm concerned, um, with plane trees, London plane tree, that it's going to have, they, they develop trunks that are three feet, really big, and they're also dirty. And you said that, um, we're not planning an HOA here, so, and those are the trees that are right now planned... So, um, and those are the trees that are right now planned along Beef Bend. I would review that idea a little bit, um, because they can be dirty trees. Um, as well as the pistachio, shenensis, um, it produces a nut that can, if little kids eat it, they'll get really sick, and dogs eat it, they'll get really sick, and there's, they're not recommended either. So you might replace that one or make sure that it is a male-only cultivar.
I will follow up. Um, when Bradley Woods, which is off, off 131st, is on the east side down, across from where the newer part of King City is, when it was developed, they put in all London plane trees, and they all had to come out because they attacked the sewers and the storm drains and everything. So please do not put those trees anywhere in a development.
Mine got.
Our site's way too dense for one of them.
Well, you know what I'm talking about. You shouldn't put it in any development.
Um, I hear, or, I mean, it's a, it's a, for a park.
I lived here, so I, you lived here.
They get, they get fungus too. That's when mine came down with the fungus.
I heard your comment or request, um, part of our permitting process for the streets and stuff, we often have a tree plan that city engineers standards, they just have tree lists for us to choose from, right?
Right.
We provided one.
Yeah, those, those are on the tree list, but, um.
Yeah, unfortunately, they are still on tree lists.
But it's not something, it's just experience for the.
Gotcha, I heard you.
Both of them dealt.
I didn't write the tree names, I can't attempt to, but it'll be in the record.
The English plane tree. And what was the other one?
Um, pistachio, shenensis.
Pistachio.
Yeah, pistachio. Yeah, I mean, you know, eat them and you'll get really sick.
We all know little children never eat things they find on the ground.
I even do.
I think, I think that's my question.
Oh, I want to make a comment too. Um, earlier today, I was really wishing there was a passageway to Beef Bend mid-block, and I see that you put one in, so I'm glad. Um, you also said that there will be connectivity to, um, the, uh, to the west, to whatever else is built there. Are you planning to, um, allow this right here to connect?
Uh, that's a private drive.
Yeah.
So where we connect, so that whole entire lot where we provided connectivity.
Yeah.
On that Street A on the southern end.
Okay.
Actually not with that homeowner. So that lot would still be redevelopable. Um, so if you just envision another row of houses like ours back-to-back with the street going up.
Okay.
Um, we, uh, coming up here to be.
Okay, having another one there. Yeah, it would, it'd be nice. Because I have no idea who lives behind me because I have to drive three hours, three miles around to bring them. That's just a, that's just a preference.
Um, I mentioned this at the workshop. Population is aging, we're having more and more people with various disabilities, speaking as one who is. Uh, and I mentioned, would there be the possibility of building at current, maybe two or three units, that the ground floor with one unit and you have a stairway and the upper unit would be up above to meet the changing demographics?
Correct. Do you remember that question? Um, the, uh, currently our plan.
I know it'd be a little bit more expensive, but it would be really easy to sell those kinds of houses because people are looking for houses that have bedrooms on the main floor.
So part of our, um, site layout is, um, where we, and we really pushed the envelope there is actually bringing this density down into the two-story structure. Um, this, that's usually the three-story, I'm sure you're familiar with the townhomes garage on the bottom, but, um, the, uh, so that's where we really push the envelope. If you look at our decked site plans, we're, we're, um, in elevation. Um, so rather than figuring each unit, how much add steps and stairs, um, we're actually doing a mass, proposing a mass grading for the site, which is, is very expensive. The, uh, so our houses can sit flat, i.e. there's not, you know, four or five steps to get up, you know, following the natural grade of the site. Um, the, uh, um, now, I mean, that was a big part. House looks better, and then it just allows better flow in and out of the neighborhood. Um, and then once the house is complete, um, you know, that two-story structure, it allows, uh, more modification or someone to modify it more easily than a three-story structure, and the steps going in, um, you know, minimize the steps going over the site.
But there, but as they're currently structured, every unit, you have to go upstairs to the bedrooms. And that's what I'm saying, could you set it up as two flats so that there'd be on, just a few units, so there'd be some that had bedrooms on the first floor, and then there'd be another flat upstairs?
Yeah, so, um, not as we currently have proposed. So what you're talking about would be more of a condominium, or it's a different actually, um, type of structure. So right now, all of our units sit on their own individual lots, structure lots. Um, the, uh, when you start getting in, what, you know, same, multiple units on the same piece of land, that enters a different classification, and we're not proposing any of those, our development. Um, the, uh, um, and it's, it's just, um, but we, we just don't develop condo flats for various, you know, reasons, it's not our specialty.
Well, I hope you will think about that as you move forward because it's becoming more and more needed.
And actually, um, single-story homes are, yes, in demand, and they do fetch.
Much higher.
A higher price.
You'd be able to make money on that, a lot of money.
We, we have built single-family homes, um, our last subdivision, we did, the, uh, let's see, a quarter of the units were singles, maybe, yeah, well, a quarter of the units were single ranch style.
I mean, you could do that in a townhouse style.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to, it's, it's the way things are going. No, right or wrong, the population is aging quickly.
Um, I also have a question, and this is, um, for whoever can answer it. You have the street of driveways, that's what I'll call it, off of, I think, Avenue B, and, um, I'm wondering what this, the, um, one right here. And I'm wondering what fire access has to say about that.
Um, so the street you're talking about is a private drive between Lot 7 and 18. Um, the, uh, there is a road design standard, driveway design standard that meets fire code. Part of that moves into that, um, uh, street length, both of those can be reached. We have to build that street, we can't build it, it's not a driveway, we have to build it to hold the fire truck. Um, the, or, um, so there's a whole set of building code that goes into, um, that will get satisfied as a condition of approval.
Will there be a hydrant on that street?
No, there wouldn't be. Um, the, uh, I don't believe, there, there wouldn't be on that, that's private property. So, um, the, uh, um, I, I don't know where all the hyd-, like, the hydrants would be, um, designated, that's the permitting process, or when we go to do our public approval. So, and those are all technical, up in 500 feet.
No, I, I understand, it's, I'm, I, I hear what she's saying, and I want to make sure you think about that issue.
Yeah.
Did you have anything else?
I think I'm good.
Okay. Thank you for answering our questions.
Yeah, I'll be back.
Okay, now, finally, you guys get to testify. Who's online?
As for in favor?
Um, anybody in the audience in favor and want to testify in favor of the development? Seeing none, we move to opponents. Anybody online that wants to testify? Don?
Hi, everyone. Yes, can you hear me?
Hi. Yeah. Would you identify yourself again?
Sure, well, I'm Don Mobley. Um, I live at 17030 Southwest 137, that is unincorporated Washington County, I guess, is how you look at it, um, Rivermead. So, um, I just, um, again, wanted to say, um, that the TSP is currently contested by the community for the Fisher Road extension, and now you tell us that the intersection at 137th and Beef Bend Road needs to be relooked at, as well changing the TSP. I ask that a relook of the TSP be, be completed before any further developments are approved. Uh, the Clean Water Services Regional Report also needs to be completed. This development and the others in the area could use a regional stormwater plan, not just a bunch of ponds with every five to 10 acres that are being developed. So, um, again, I'm not against, um, the particular developer or that it will eventually get developed, I'm just simply saying that some things really should be looked at before we go any further, especially with the issues that we're having at that intersection. And again, there are elderly people that live in this neighborhood, and, you know, be, my mother included, and it's just, somebody's going to die at that intersection, and I really hope it doesn't take that in order to get that intersection completed, and it seems like now is a great time to get that solved. So again, thank you for your time, and I do hope that you guys consider those things before approving.
Anybody else online? None? Seeing none? Okay, uh, now we'll hear from, uh, people in the audience, and Carl Fornson, you're up first.
Thanks. Clarification before I start? Ask a question?
What's your question?
Um, a lot has changed in the last few days, as the city planner acknowledged, and I had trouble getting information, I needed to do my review, I asked the developer for it and never received it, but eventually I got it just recently and made comments and review on that. Changes have been made since, and I'm concerned at future meetings, I've heard restrictions on a certain number of days, whether we could provide review comments. So can the council commission clarify?
It's seven days from today, people here or if there's other folks can write concerns. And then the following seven days, the applicant will have the opportunity to write written response to the response from citizens. And the hearing is going to get continued to two weeks from today. So.
If the seven days starting and we don't have the materials. It needs some seven days of the materials.
Material are in now, correct? Are they on the website?
I haven't uploaded them to the website.
When will they be on the website? That's day one. Okay, and you have three minutes. It's just, we're going. Okay, thank you.
Very happy shirt.
Oh, just so much, is this, is that all you set up? Yeah, I've read, I've read.
Okay, that'll be, that'll be okay. Um, I want to make sure it gets into the record because Ronnie doesn't take the, um, comments, uh, by me, I'm a community member, been a professional engineer for 40 years. Uh, my address is 12085 Southwest King Richard Drive in City. Uh, I recommend that, I request that the commission not recommend approval for this. Uh, the fire code revised, uh, required revision of Kensington Square. Um, I think that might have been covered, and it sounds like you've already read that part, so I will cover that point, um, and get on to the fact that that information was not provided, um, and there was, uh, misunderstanding about what was even being proposed, and whether it would meet the code, and even the code reviewer didn't have the opportunity to do that. And that just shows the pattern of the kind of mistake that occurred with Kingston Terrace when the transportation system plan alternative study chose an east-west collector road alignment that traversed multiple deep.
Um, Mr. Fornson, that is not part of the discussion here. King, Fisher Road is irrelevant to this discussion, so I'll ask you to move on.
So I wanted to discuss the, uh, the fact that Oregon Department of Geology and Merrill Industries has identified areas, uh, in this development and, um, the area of Kingston Terrace for future developments that are high risk of landslides and high risk of liquefaction. And, so if we're not going to be talking about, not the road, this does fit into the, use the TSP, as discussed and discussed earlier, but if I can't discuss the TSP, then I'll go on to note that Tagami identified a very high risk of landslides and very high risk of liquefaction in the ravines, and also identified a high to moderate risk of liquefaction in the soils present in the 12 River deposits between the river and the South Lovable Mountains. This relatively flat land was previously for farming and grazing before development. Kensington Square Development Geo-Pacific Engineering Report on page 15 says, based on the results of their limited investigations and their understanding, the geologic conditions in the site vicinity, that it is our opinion, the risk of liquefaction in the site is considered to be low, and no special measures are needed for liquefaction. They noted, uh, Tagami actually identified the area as high to moderate risk to liquefaction in this vicinity. But in Amer-, another apparent misunderstanding, the Kensington Square report stated that it was low risk. Uh, this misunderstood risk is most critical for the 15-foot high retaining wall shown on the plan that supports Beef Bend Road above the Kensington Square homes. If seismic events, the soil supporting the retaining wall could lose strength required to support the wall in a turn that supports the foundation of Beef Bend Road. Beef Bend owned road is critical material for King City and the surrounding cities, potential loss of the material and total collateral damage to the nearby homes, falling seismic events that appears to be disregarded by the provided information. And I give the location of the Tagami map, map that I referenced for this area. Now, the stormwater design liability and incomplete Clean Water Services helpful mountain stormwater studies concern is Kensington Square Stormwater Report acknowledges there's no existing storm drain, no storm drain site adjacent, and the flow in excess of a 25-year storm event would flow overland at 120% happen. For perspective, the region has experienced two much larger events that exceeded the 25-year flood in the last 25 years, and when rainfall exceeds the 125 probability rainfall event, like the storm bubble injury released to downstream rural area where no stormwater system or piping currently exists to safely deliver the stormwater to Walton River. Uh, the overflow with probability exceeding 125 years would cause significant water damage to homes.
Can you bring your, because you're over.
As you've already noted, there's existing historical erosion damage and, uh, damage to basements in that area from previous and in the, uh, review and approval of Kingston Terrace Plan, it was promised that these would be resolved with new development. And here we are with a new development that, as proposed, and possibly more information has come, um, didn't properly handle the stormwater and dumped it. So I would, so that is sufficiently resolved, ask the commission not recommend, and you have the risk.
Thank you very much.
I can't ask questions. Well, no, I, I listed your Google map and, and I didn't see the liquefaction area.
I'll respond and comment.
And I lived through that flood when I lived in Bradley Woods. I know exactly where that 100-plus year floodline is, and it includes your property that you own in Rivermead.
Uh, the property, not my personal property.
Your wife's there.
Yeah, but it, we are not within the.
No.
I'm, I'm a registered, and I'm certified and provided accounting with the information.
Yeah.
I serve it as, as we are well above 60 feet or above 100.
That's fine, that's fine. The point, you know what the point is. Okay.
All right, sorry.
Okay, um, Don, Dan Brenner? Uh, please give your name and address, and whether you live in the city.
My name's Dan Brenner, I live at 14120 Southwest River Lane in Rivermead in Tiger. I was going to start speaking about the intersection of 137th and Beef Bend, and the problems with yourselves, these gentlemen, Washington County, they already opened that door, they all know it's dangerous. That's been my contention all along with Mr. Johncheck, each time what we've met with him, I've voiced my concern over that intersection. To me, whether it's Washington County, I, King City, Bellicor, whomever, my point To me, whether it's Washington County, I, King City, developer, whomever, my point of view, because of the condition of that intersection, I feel that any development, because it's all coming up, one thirty-seventh, that that development should be put on hold so it could be in conjunction with that intersection being improved. Because it's, as you all say, it's already a hazard, and with any development, it will only multiply. Who knows? So I would like to see happen is that development not start until that intersection is taken care of, however it's improved. And that's that. As far as stormwater, now there's the east-west connector onto one thirty-seventh, which is south of the proposed, uh, retention pond. That east-west connector will abut the very next property down one thirty-seventh. There'll be nothing but the pavement of that new street running alongside the property line of the first house, south of the development. All of that water that is on that street not work its way into the catch basin.
It's, uh, eight twenty-one. Okay. So is there any more testimony in opposition? I don't have anybody written down. Can you write on the, this very sophisticated, uh? Can I, can I do that right after, or do I need? No. Okay.
With during your three minutes.
We haven't started her three minutes, and she gets introduce herself before we start the clock.
I had not, oh, sorry, I had not, oh, my name is Rachel Ager, and I live in, um, unincorporated Washington County. And I had not intended to speak tonight, but I would like to, after hearing the discussion around the letter from Washington County and the disregard for the developers' attorney to this, for the safety of, um, that corner, I would like to voice my concern about that corner of Beefen and one hundred and thirty-seventh. And I ask that the commission not recommend approval for this development until that issue is addressed and with a guarantee that the solution occur prior to development starting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I have a neutral.
Oh, is there anybody who just wants to ask a question, not issue an opinion? On line?
I have a neutral.
Oh, you have a neutral?
Yes.
Okay.
Tony Mills from Washington County.
Okay. Um, Tony, are, are, you got him on? Tony, uh, this is Chair Beener. Um, please state your name and your address and make your comment.
Good evening. Um, my name is Tony Mills. I'm an associate.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you unmute? That happens so often. Forget to unmute yourself. Oh. You want to check this?
Can you hear me?
Right now, Tony.
Can you hear me?
Barely, yeah. Hang on.
Oh, yeah, get some more.
Yep, okay, that's about as good as we're gonna get, I think.
Can you hear us now, Tony?
I can, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
And make sure you speak up, because the speaker on the laptop that's you're on is not that great.
Oh. Okay.
You had some problems here.
No problem, I'll try and speak up my best.
And then give your statement.
Sure. My name is Tony Mills. I'm an associate, uh, transportation planner with Washington County Land Use and Transportation. Uh, my address is one five five North, uh, First Avenue, Suite three fifty, Hillsborough, Oregon, nine seven one two four. I'm providing neutral testimony, primarily I want to put on the record that Washington County, um, the, is, is acting as the road authority regarding the right-of-way in southwest Beefen Road. The issues that have been discussed regarding the intersection between southwest one thirty-seventh Avenue and southwest Beefen Road are safety concerns that have been identified by the county traffic engineer team. These statements are not intended to influence the land use decision in any way whatsoever. They are merely comments regarding a safety hazard that has been identified by our traffic The potential solutions for the safety issues that have been identified, based on the data that was provided by the Transportation Impact Study from Lancaster Mobley, can be resolved without, uh, having to condition the land use application. We've identified those issues and discussed them with the applicant team. We provided them with some potential options. We do not intend for those solutions to be tied to the land use application in any way whatsoever. I also want to state for the record that the final comments provided by the county should be included on a letter dated today, April ninth. Any other comments that were provided were not intended to be a part of the formal record. And that's all.
Is there any questions? I'm sorry, your last name again, excuse me.
Mills, M.I.L.L.S.
Sorry. I just didn't catch it. Does anyone have a question of Mr. Mills? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
No problem, thank you.
Um, do I have to do something to cut him off?
Ronnie can do that.
Okay. All right. Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to make a comment?
Chair?
Yeah.
Would you mind if I just repeat what Mr. Mills said because of the audio issue of疏离?
Yeah.
Because he was right in front of you, but I think that maybe some people in the audience might not have totally heard it, what he was saying. I think I could summarize it. So he wanted to be on the record that the comments from the county that were finalized were sent over today, and those should be the ones that are looked at for the record. He wanted to clarify that the Traffic Intent Study, uh, solutions and issues can be resolved without conditioning, and that the county has maintained a position that the issues and their letter and comments should not be tied to the land use decision from the commission today. Um, and then he did, as, uh, we had a pre-introduce the idea that there are safety concerns that have been identified by the county engineer, and that they maintain that they are the road authority on Beefen Road and one thirty-seventh.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's paraphrasing very strongly.
Yeah. Okay.
I'd like to add one comment if I can sign my name.
No. Oh, you wanna? Find the fancy form here. Thank you. And if you will, for the record, would you?
Greg Russell, unincorporated Washington County, live in Rivermead. Uh, based upon that conversation we just got from the county, you're being able to identify safety hazards, but now what? So there's no timeline on this kind of thing with the intersection, so if you identify the safety hazards, you're not really going in any direction at all trying to solve what the problems are. So that communication with the county, to me, means nothing. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to make a comment or ask a question? Nobody online, Ronnie? Okay. Um, hearing none online and hearing none here. Okay. But your rebuttal, any rebuttal that you want to make? Please keep it as brief as possible, it's getting late.
What did Johnny check? Um, the first one, thank everyone for, um, testifying today, appreciate that. Um, big picture, here concerns about the intersection, safety, one thirty-seventh. Part of this is, this is why we held so many community meetings, allows for natural dialogue, not a formal hearing like this where you can't have that. Um, we are aware of that. Um, the, uh, and we provided into the record additional traffic studies to address that. Cueing, um, at Peach Street, the county said we didn't need to and told us not to study that intersection. We did. Um, it's in the record today. We don't need to go over, I mean, we can go over it and have traffic shared in detail. The, the big picture is that intersection needs to be fixed. The Kingston Terrace Master Plan has a plan for it. Um, part of our fees in development, we're gonna pay two point one million in SDCs, SDTPs that are specifically to develop, to improve one thirty-first, uh, one hundred and fifty-first that road, specific fees that are ties to that air, to, for roads only. So there's a plan, uh, there's a plan out there that needs to be executed. I heard, um, it's, as a developer, we can't condemn land, do the, all the stuff that's required to execute that plan. Um, the, uh, um, so I just wanted to say that for the record, and, um, my, I do have my geotechnical engineer and civil engineer, or structure, or environment, oh, traffic engineer, um, to answer questions or concerns and to get into the technical details, um, that I can't do. Um, the, um, the, I would like to make sure I address Dan's, uh, get my civil engineer back on to address, um, that we are, uh, will be treating in that pond all our public right-of-way improvements, um, the, uh, as part of our plan. And it's just sloping of the roads that will feed back to catch basins and stuff. And, uh, um, and then also my, um, uh, if we can get, um, so part of the record and one of the documents sending from you that we had to submit the last minute today was a test, uh, written statement from Ben Anderson from GeoPacific, addressing the liquidification, um, issue. And essentially what's in the record is, um, uh, analysis, the site-specific analysis that they did, um, and how for liquidification you need the pond water to be above so many, above sixty feet. Um, they filed their analysis and it's in their report, that they actually looked at all the wells in the area, their, the groundwater's below that. The, uh, um, so he formally addressed that. And then also, um, I guess the stormwater, um, the, um, yeah, I can get my, if we can get Steve Johnson back on. Hey, Steve, can you address, um, there's a comment, um, a concern about the way the slopes of the roads, one thirty-seventh and Street A, that some of the water would get away from our site and not be treated. Um, can you address that real quick, please?
Yeah, absolutely. So like we said previously, all the, all the water drains to the south onto A Street, and then A Street conveys the water to the, to the east towards one thirty-seventh. Um, A Street is going to be a three-quarter width improvement. Um, there's going to be a temporary berm or curb on that south side, really blocking any drainage going south past our property. The Street A also slopes, um, slopes towards the north. So where Streets B, um, being, uh, D intersect, that's going to be the flow line. So, um, while everything does drain to the south, A kicks back to the north, carries into a flow line and enters into the basin. Um, any, any water leaving the site right at the intersection of one thirty-seventh and A is gonna be insignificant and just based on the grade of one thirty-seventh coming down and a small warped panel of A at the intersection. Um, ninety-nine point nine percent of the water on site all goes into the basin, all gets treated, and then slow released, um, at a less than pre-development rate.
I have a question. Um, how are you gonna slope the road to keep the water from going further south and get it back to the pond that's north of one?
Yeah. So Street A is a, is a, it's a typical street section where the center line of the road is the crown. Um, we're having to build, I believe, three or four feet past the crown, so there'll be a, uh, a, uh, a super elevated area there. So the whole crown of A Street drains to the north, to the flow line that drains to the east into the basin. So if you just imagine a normal street section where the center line is the crown, with us doing the three-quarter width improvement, we're only doing, I believe, three feet beyond the center line, and that will be a temporary AC lift-up, so it's a straight, even, two percent cross slope going to the north, so we connect or collect all the water. In addition to that, as another measure of safety, we are putting, um, the, uh, an AC berm or, or curb along that south edge of A Street, just as a belt and suspenders to make sure we capture everything and direct it back to the north of that flow line that goes into the basin.
Is there any possibility of putting a grate next to that berm to catch anything that gets, gets away from?
We could, but that would be putting a, a catch basin on, on the high side, and there's really no, no flows that are going to be going there. And then that also, um, also increases the amount of effort and work needed when the full street is improved, when the property to the south develops, that they'll have to remove that, that inlet there. Um, right now, everything will drain with the cross section of A Street to the north, to that flow line where all the streets intersect and, and convey into the, into the basin.
Okay, that isn't gonna cause any safety issues?
No, it, it's a, it's a standard.
Black ice?
No, it's a, it's a standard city stranded street cross slope. Um, two percent is, is a, is a healthy amount to, to keep drainage and, uh, and absorb any construction tolerances of laying down an AC.
Okay, I just want to understand that, because that's certainly an issue we face here in Heartland area, in the hills.
Absolutely.
Black ice, we've all had to deal with it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anybody else that wanted to make a, a neutral comment? Last call.
I think we're in rebuttal.
We're in rebuttal.
Oh, we're in rebuttal, I'm sorry.
Wanted to get Cody up there to introduce our traffic and briefly address that quote-unquote safety hazard.
Can you get Melissa Webb on?
And I have, I have a question that I need, while, while you're getting her on. Um, would, would the developer have any problem with only allowing parking on one side? Would would the developer have any problem with only allowing parking on one side of one thirty seventh? Because I'm concerned about stacking.
So we have to build the street to the standard of the plan. We're going to do that. And then it would be the city engineer that has formulated follow up other. Like we wouldn't get to make that call.
That correct?
Yeah, that's the city's fault.
Okay, well.
It the the street will be wider though, too. Like I know you envision it now, the you know, the pavements, so we're dedicating in that case like twenty or more feet of our land. So there'll be additional room for the sidewalk and curb. And so it's going to look different or wider.
Well, a portion of it you.
Yeah, just as far as for parking and they wouldn't be actually out in the lane if they allowed it.
Yeah, so how many lanes is the south street going to be? You're only going to leave half of it, but one lane.
So it'd be similar. To envision a local street where like there's parking on both sides during the half term. And this is a question I should let Melissa answer, but. The if you can envision like we have one drive lane and people go between the driveways and stuff. The and actually I will be likely. I should be letting Melissa answer that.
Okay.
Is Melissa on? Melissa, you there?
I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, speak up a little and please introduce yourself and your address.
Sure. My name is Melissa Webb with Lancaster Mobley and my address is eleven thirty. Southwest Morrison Street, Suite three eighteen, and that's in Portland. Cody, um, do you want to? I have a hard time hearing. Can you repeat what question you had for me?
Melissa, if you can just walk the commissioners through your memo you submitted today and your findings. Just a brief, high level. And then if they have specific follow up questions, you can get into the nitty gritty.
Yeah, sure, I can do that. So and I know Tony mentioned this when he was speaking. One of the concerns that Washington County had was perceived safety issue there at. The Beef Bend and one thirty seventh intersection. So one of the things that we do as part of our traffic study is we check the crash history at the intersection. And in this case, we looked at it for the last five years. So that would have been starting January of twenty nineteen. All the way through December of twenty twenty three. And when we have a two way left turn lane that we have currently right there at the intersection, one of. The concerns is head on collisions where you have vehicles, you know, who are both trying to turn left onto each street. There is a possibility for head on collision. So when we looked at the crash history, what we found there. At the one thirty seventh intersection was that in the last five years, there was one reported collision. And it was a collision that was the result of an animal. So there were no collisions at that intersection that were any that were indicative of head on collisions. We also looked at the crash history there at Peachtree as well to kind of get the same idea. And at that intersection, again, in the last five years, we did find that there was also. One crash at the intersection and this one was related to a turning movement. So a a southbound vehicle. Was turning left onto the roadway and did not yield right of way to a. Westbound vehicle and there was a collision. It's important to note, both collisions were property damage only, so there were no reported injuries. So what? Yes, go ahead.
Your traffic study period does not include the time after, was it the county who put that? That.
Pedestrian.
Pedestrian island. In and I have had. People tell me that it's much more dangerous now to make left turns because of it. Did you look at that issue?
I did look again from, I believe it was, like I said, twenty nineteen all the way through the end of twenty twenty three. Pardon?
Put in in twenty twenty four.
Okay, and we don't have available crash data that's considered finalized. Until after twenty twenty three.
Well, I think that's an issue that you should be looking at.
I'm gonna let let one of our.
This is this is Dean Blair. I'm on one of the commissioners, the one that lives in the area. Since the island was put in, it originally had the big pole that said pedestrian crossing. That's been blasted through twice since then. You'll get the skid marks all the way over the island. And right now you currently have the remains of a pole kind of sticking up. The bike hazard and and just experientially. Going into that lane and having to decelerate. I used to go into the lane gradually. Now I have to go into quick, go in fast, decelerate fast. And when a car is coming at me turning the other way, it's doing the same thing. And we can't escape to the lanes we were just in because there's cars behind us that are now blasting through it. It it's a much different world with that pedestrian crossing than it was prior to that. Also, that one crash in five years, my neighbors know this area. They they know how to get in and out. It's 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 rural rural people that can drive this stuff.
So the the point I was raising is the conditions at that intersection have changed for the worse.
Yep, and one one of the issues that was brought up was. You know, what can we do about it? You know, there's really no, you know, as you can see that with the pedestrian crossing, there is not a lot of space available. And that's why in the TSP, it does talk about realigning one thirty seventh to meet up with Collier. And that would give you a lot longer turn lane there. But again, that's, you know, that's a future project in the TSP.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You keep it down for a couple minutes, please.
So that was an interesting conversation from Tony Mills. He said there's some potential solutions that can be achieved without conditioning the land use application. I'm not really sure what that meant, but. One commenter said Tony said nothing and I don't know, kind of agree with that. I don't know what he said, but. I the important, the takeaway that I got from that is he's not trying to tell us to redesign our subdivision anymore. I'm not sure that's what he meant, but that's what I got out of it. Which would be a pleasant, he must have read my letter. But in any event. When you have safety hazards like this, the only real solution is to bump up the the project that's in the TSP and make it a higher priority. And that's something the city is going to have to negotiate with the county, but I mean. That that is the solution. So that's what needs to happen. Someone said that that there should be no development until the new intersection comes in. There's there's no mechanism in Oregon land use law to do that. I mean, the the, you know. Since the governor's initiative to prioritize housing and to bring it on faster and, you know, make it happen. You got the no changing the goalpost rules, you got one hundred twenty day rules for most subdivisions. So there really isn't a mechanism to delay things. The other thing that's kind of interesting is when the governor passed the clear and objective approval criteria and one of the standards that got left out. Is safety. Safety is no longer a standard for a subdivision approval. There's four legal cases that say that now. What what's supposed to happen is instead of having a. Discretionary criteria like safety, they're supposed to turn that into clear and objective standards like. Your turn lane has to be a hundred foot long or something like that, something that can be measured. But that but the cities are supposed to go through their code and get rid of all of those kind of squishy terms. Like compatibility and safety and whatever, you know, things like that. Now, with regards to the the fire code, that's an interesting one. Because the fire code is also not an approval standard for a land use subdivision. I was kind of surprised by that frankly, but there is a little bit of case on point, Trump versus City Eugene. If a local government wants to make the fire code approval standard, it has to adopt the fire code into its code. Say, you know, one of your approval standards is to meet the fire code. I don't think that your code has that. It probably should. It's not really an issue for us because I think we're going to deal with it anyway, you know, with the sprinklers. Which is an option under the fire code. So, you know, it's. It's not that important. Now liquefaction, let's talk about that real briefly. Liquefaction is a geologic concept where you have dirt and it turns into mud. And that's because dirt, particularly clay, has chemical bonds with water. And it's like almost like a sponge, although it's a chemical bond, not a physical one. But, you know, it absorbs it until that point where it can't absorb anymore and then it just kind of turns to mud. And that's when it goes from a liquid to a solid that you have liquefaction. When you when you create a high density development, it has lots of impervious surface like streets. You're actually improving the liquefaction tremendous, you're reducing the liquefaction potential exponentially because. Now all the water that would normally go into the ground and get sucked up into the dirt. It's going on your roof into a drain and it's going to that big pond that he's going to create. And then it goes down into a creek. So slowly, so this site will have almost no potential. It doesn't have any potential for liquefaction right now. But after it's developed, it definitely won't. And and with regards to the Dogami map, I've done a lot of cases with a lot of. I may have a degree in geology myself. I work with a lot of geologists. That map is very generalized and it probably creates more fear than it does solve any problems. It's so generalized, it's not very useful. And it also hasn't been adopted by the city. So it's not even a map that's a regulatory map. And, you know, I haven't met a geologist that works in the field of this area that thinks that map is good. Most of them think it just creates a lot of fear in the in the minds of the public without actually helping. But I'm not even sure why it was created by Dogami, but it's really worthless. That, you know, these maps, when they're because they're so generalized, developers like Cody have to hire. Experts to actually go out there and do the studies and he puts his stamp on something and, you know, that's sort of his guarantee that he. You know, engineers just don't write things down that they don't believe because they're kind of could be liable for that. So the engineer's stamp is really. The the hallmark of of his work. And so when you read that geological study that's in the record, can think about that and then. It's way more detailed than the Dogami letter. All right, so. The final thing about the intersection, let's go back to that for a second. Because I made a note to myself, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg problem. The solution is in the TSP, but we need developers to be writing those checks, the two million dollar checks to fix the intersection. Because part of the money that the TSP lots is from development. So you you need the development to create. The money to fix the intersection. And. And so I I don't know, I mean, the timing of it can't be perfect. It's never going to be perfect. It's never going to be the intersection gets fixed and the development comes. That it's it's never how it works. As for the county, they say they're the road authority. That means they fix the potholes. They're not the land use planning authority. All right, well, that's really all I have on the on the rebuttal. So yeah. Appreciate your time listening to this case. The record obviously will stay open. There's lots of documents. To read over the next week. And.
Said there, the condition of the continuance will be that. The public will have seven days.
Yes.
To get any written materials.
And my recommendation on that would be to make it seven days open to all testimony, not just from the opponents one week and us the next week. It's just everyone can submit and then the next week is just rebuttal.
Yeah.
Which is that that you responding specifically to what was submitted the first week and not just whatever you want to talk about.
Then we will have that material and. Max will make sure I get written copy. Before the hearing.
Yes.
Which I didn't get this time.
I just want to say thanks.
Oh, thank you very much. Thank you very much. I I. You've been very good. I I still think having the workshop is the best alternative that allows. The commissioners to kind of come up with questions that they're going to want answers to and it allows you to have. The opportunity to know what the questions are.
That that was very helpful. We did give you a answer to the twenty one questions. There's one modification to that. We said that we didn't study Peachtree. But now we have, because at the same time we were writing that, we did go back and study Peachtree. So. That is.
One of the problems is when Washington County allowed Peachtree. And Collier to be developed along there, they did not put. Even sufficient water retention under their own code at the time, which is what. When it and with the failing culverts, that's what caused flooding. I even had flooding. Because they didn't take care of the problem of one thirty first and I lived Jamma Bradley. So. It's old problems that have not been resolved as of yet. And they go back thirty plus years. So, and I wanted to make sure you knew about the culprit issue. I'm pretty sure one of them is. In your property area. Under the, under, it's under the road.
Okay, we'll we'll take a look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, and they'd rather wait until a road collapses. Which is what it did, literally collapsed.
Chair, do you have anything else?
Did you have any other comments staff that you wanted to make?
Staff doesn't have any comments or rebuttals.
Okay, it's time for discussion. And then we're going to continue this. Do you want to, do you want to have me do the condition, the continuance right now?
Yeah, if I could, Chair. So I think the best way to handle this is save our.
Okay.
Until the next hearing.
All right.
Because right now we're close.
Okay, all right.
We'll have to address this latest.
Yeah.
Information that we've received.
Yeah.
Thing and that will be posted as soon as possible.
Well, they'll get on the in the morning, you'll get the stuff on in the morning that you got today.
And hopefully over the next, over the course of the next, well, eight days. Half day, so seven days, once we get everything posted online. We will address those comments and concerns in the final version of the conditions.
Yeah.
And get those back to you.
Yeah. Okay. With that, I'm going to request a motion to continue this hearing to a date certain April. Yeah, April twenty third, am I correct? At six PM. To address the issues that will be raised over the the next two weeks. As as explained for the seven days for folks to make their comments and the second seven days for the. Applicant to make their response and we will come back here. And go over all that information and then the commission will make a recommendation. To the council and I believe the council will have see this next month, am I correct?
So Chair, I just wanted to make sure that we're being clear. We're not changing the findings or.
No.
Or just addressing the.
Yeah, we're addressing the new issues, yeah. And it would go to council next month, is that correct?
Be next available, so it would be. A tight window with, I think we have to renotice it and everything else.
Okay.
So I need to look at that and see now that we're moving this back to the twenty third. I don't want to do this a couple of weeks to get it in front of council in May. That's a bit of a challenge.
Yeah.
That'd be putting a lot of pressure. You would have to have it as soon, but we'd actually end up, I think, putting the notice out. Is it fourteen day? Is it fourteen or from one day?
You you could put it out now. For council, you could. Because you're just saying we're going to have a hearing on some day.
Yeah, it's just if we don't have, it's kind of putting the cart in front of the horse because we don't have a decision before we put out notice. So. Typically, what I like to have is a decision or a recommendation from this body. And then we put out the public note. And then we put out the public notice to go to the next body.
That's much clearer.
It just prevents us from having if this body for some reason gets held up in the deliberations. And it pushes back our timeline at City Council. I mean, we could do it, but it does add a layer of risk. On the sense that uh then if this body doesn't render that recommendation in a time of fashion, then we did a lot of. So it's possible, we we can do it, but it it does complicate matters.
Okay, um I'm still waiting for a motion to a condit- uh to.
I move that we continue this hearing on day certain.
April.
April twenty third at six PM. And um. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've had a a motion and a second to continue this hearing to uh April twenty third. At six PM to address the new material that will have come in. That we will not be dealing with everything that we've heard tonight. We will just address. The concerns and response that were that were raised this evening and over the next seven days. Okay, is everybody clear? Can I have a hat vote? Um Ms. Petrie, would you raise your hand? They're all raising their hands. It's everybody. I assume that Lori raised her hand. Okay. Thank you, Lori. I hope you feel better soon. Is there any other items that need to go on the oh, I have one thing that I'd like to, we're not going to vote on it. I have an issue. I'm a real really interested person in making sure people have training in CPR and using defibrillators. And in two thousand seventeen, the first year I was on the council, we did a training. And there's nobody left except me on either the planning commission or the council who's had that training. And I would like us to. Try to get um that scheduled so we can get training on our own defibrillator because the. The fire department told me that they're different for de- defibrillators work a little bit differently. And I really think it would be a good idea for all of us to have that training.
I do too.
Because that's eight years ago when I had the training. Did you hear us, Mike?
I'm sorry.
We are talking about getting training on defibrillators and CPRs for both council and and I've got consensus here that they want it. I think because this is what, you know, hearings like this is when we get the most people here. And I've had to do it twice. I had to do it. Arbitrate, yes, uh motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor? We are closed.